I call a special session in order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that the seat? Alright, so our city administrator will now lead the meeting.
Okay, welcome everyone. As advertised, this is going to be a report here from our Police Building Committee. We see the committee members listed there on the slide. Our first meeting was about the beginning of March and now here we are ready to provide a report to you of what we've done. So I'd like to thank the committee members for their hard work and staying on top of it and continuing to move forward with the process. Our purpose from the beginning is to be able to provide the council with options for consideration and that's what we have, we'll show you here tonight. Just a bit of the background, I won't spend a lot of time on this because I think we all know the background about moving to Market Street location at 440 Market Street about 2003. It was meant to be a temporary solution and there's a lot of deficiencies with that current facility. Some of them are listed here but there are more than that. And then, and the need for a long-term solution is clear and it's time to pursue that. The first thing we do when we're going to explore options and look at possibilities is to kind of consider what our assumptions are and that helps to inform our goals for the end state. And so you see our assumptions there with regard to population, how long we want this solution to be in place, about a 20-year life cycle is what's recommended by the International Association of Chiefs of Police. Which again, the process that we're going to be using is a process that has been published by that association, them being the experts on police facilities. Further assumptions there have to do with how, what number of officers are we going to have, so what kind of building size should we be looking at and then what style of building, single-story versus two-story. The process from the Chiefs of Police Association comes in four phases. What you see there is Phase One. Now in Phase One was almost all of this work, in fact, all of this work was done by the previous committee that had met and so we had the notes from that committee and so we were able to just validate all of those things and then move forward with the next phase. So one of the primary things in the part in the second phase, which is the project plan and pre-design phase, is to conduct a space needs assessment. Now there had been a needs analysis done with the previous committee, so we used that but we refined it to create a checklist of sorts with types of rooms for which functions and how many square footage we thought would be appropriate for those functions. And so by having that list of requirements, an objective list, then we could take that list and then begin to look for facilities that would meet those requirements. One of the next phase items in this phase is to evaluate facility options. So the committee did discuss buy and renovate versus lease and renovate versus building new construction. And we looked at properties in each of those categories. And then we would do site evaluations of the ones that looked like, based on their characteristics, were a possible fit. Over the course of the, even since the first committee had started, there were probably 12 or so properties that had been at least looked at briefly or at least once to see if they had any potential. But then, as is our purpose, is to narrow it down to some feasible options for the council to consider. The first of the, we have three properties. The first is at 300 Market Street. This is a 6,900 square foot, single-story building. This building is up for lease. We talked to the owners and discussed owner build-out and a purchase option at the end of the lease. The pros to this building in particular are that its open floor plan supports a build-out to meet our space requirements and the building is in very good shape, it has a good appearance, structurally sound. The challenges with this location, well, Market Street location and that's a plus or a minus depending on your point of view. Some would be for it, some would be against it, so we recognize that as a challenge. It would mean removing a building that, from the tax roll and also we are concerned about the windows, the number of large windows that face the public street. The next is 337 Arch Street. This is a 4,800 square foot, single-story structure. This is a purchase/renovate option. The pros of this, modest renovation, there's a good bit of the existing floor plan could be made to work. There's ample parking and there's a large lot for possible future expansion if that should become necessary. The challenges are age, it's a little bit of an older building, it's smaller than the ideal square footage although the committee felt that it could, it could work, it's just a little bit smaller than what they would consider ideal. And again, this property would be removed from the tax roll. Finally, we come to 441 Chestnut Street. This building is already owned by the city. 14,000 square feet, two stories. The pros are a 7,000 square foot floor on the first floor would be ample space, there's parking, it's open on that first floor and it can be configured to suit the operations of a police department. There would be no impact on the tax roll and we could improve the appearance of the building and improve the curb appeal and the appearance in that neighborhood. Challenges, we don't know what the cost of renovation would be, we would have, there would be more work necessary to find out what that cost would be. And then what are the options for the second floor? Could be that a long-term plan would be to have all the city offices and municipal functions in one building. But that's something for the council to consider and that would have to be a longer-term plan. These are the next steps in that process. Phase Three would be budgeting and funding. Phase Four would be design and delivery and those are all yet to come once we decide really on a site to get more of the details about what it would take to make the site ready for occupancy. Couple of conclusions from the committee. The need to find and pursue and achieve a long-term solution is urgent. And we also want to emphasize that the site, whatever site is selected, that it has to be properly renovated and outfitted to suit police operations. No skipping, we want to have a very good, suitable solution for the police department to function as they should. The committee has gone as far as it can go at this time and we'll be needing the council's input for further pursuit of options. And that concludes the committee's report and we'll happy to entertain any questions and comments about our process or the properties under consideration at this time.
I guess I can say real quick, just from the committee side, we're kind of at a point where we got with all of these properties, if we wanted to pursue any of them further, we're now at an area where we need to start spending money. So the committee was not authorized to spend any money when this started. So, any of those, we would need architectural drawings done, we would need site renovation, bids, all of those things would have to be done to make, to start the actual process. And that's not part of what the committee was able to do obviously. But, so yeah, that's why we, the report is not exact. You know, there was some drawings and things like that done, just free-handed, but nothing official. So where we're at is, we have to talk about it and make a choice.
And I, just to, if I could re-interject here a little bit, with the current building that we're in, as mostly everybody knows, if you've been counseling, I sure knows, to put money into that building, I think it's a waste. If we're going to put money into a new building and do it right, let's do it right. I mean, our building currently, as Jimmy knows, it needs a, you know, a roof, it needs a furnace, it needs, it needs a lot of work. That when, the idea was right at the time to go down there temporarily, but it wasn't, and I'm not blaming anybody, there just wasn't an investment, initial investment at first to keep it updated and keep, and get it going. It was supposed to be temporary at the time and it just, it's outlived its needs really because it's... And I think one of the things that we didn't go over, that Joe didn't mention, but I'll mention it, is we want to make sure the building's equipped to expand a little bit if we needed to. The police department, size-wise, who knows what'll happen down the future, but we're not saying we need all that room now, but we are saying, let's not skip ourselves short and let's do it correctly and not, and not basically cut ourselves short when it comes to the renovation or moving into a new building.
So, I have a question, have we discussed what kind of finances at all?
Yeah, so we did talk with Treasurer and he gave us an idea, which this is, we're going to talk about, you know, part of it, as a group to kind of figure out, but he did give us a price on what the city could afford roughly per year towards the cost of a building or renovations and all that type of thing. Plus there's some monies that may be company available in the future that we could allocate as well. So yes, that was part of it, but the price side of it, money side of it more is an executive session, council to talk about that side of it, so that way we don't give away what we're thinking already, you know, and we don't lose ourselves on an offer, if there was an offer that was going to be put in, we don't, we don't know where we're at. So we don't want to talk too much about that because we don't know what we're going with next.
How much were the buildings?
The prices, that we can say, with the public, the, Arch Street?
Arch Street is at 225, publicly listed at 225. And the lease option was...
Was a $60,000 a year lease, five years, with a purchase option at the end of $500,000. Was what they, that's what they proposed to us. Again, the committee's job was not to talk about the price, it was to talk about the suitability of the building. That building is absolutely...
So Arch Street is $800,000?
No, 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 it's Market Street.
City info, that's Market Street.
Market Street.
That's Market.
None of this, none of this, this is just the prices of the building. None of it includes any of the renovations that need to be done?
Well, the, no, that's not true. The, the lease option did include all of the renovations.
I thought there was an 80/20 split on the renovations.
No, the lease, the lease price included all of the renovations. And then the only thing that we would have to pay for at that point is outfitting the building with desks and things like that. That we would have to do at any building.
How much was Arch?
Arch was, the asking price is 225, that's what the asking price is.
Well, one thing I want to say, Brad is correct, the existing police department, there's no question, we haven't put anything in because we're looking at it by thinking we're going to make a move someday. And one thing the committee, I know you spent a lot of time, all of you, and Dodi was a nice presentation, we definitely have some things to think about. Financing is the major thing and what we can afford and what we as the council and the mayor wants to take and decide to spend long-term, initially we're going to need some money down and then finance it from there. The warehouse, I know the building pretty well, I've been in and out of it enough times. Only problem is I think it'd be very costly to renovate that building. And then after renovated, what's in there, we'd define a new location for all, everything's in there because there is warehousing, a lot of equipment, so your equipment, police department stuff, mostly a lot of parks and rec in there and so forth.
So Brad, as my head of the department, have you talked to any of the other officers regarding these options?
No, I mean, they're, that's not really their, that's what you, your purview, they're kind of just waiting to see what happens. I mean, they, they understand, they know inside our department right now, we've got a problem, even with the limited manpower we have, we've got a problem with what we have. The building itself is just not conducive to our day-to-day operations like Ms. Ocker said, the flow, we want to make it a little bit, the flow a little bit better too. So there's a lot of negatives in the building we're currently in and it's getting to a point where, and I've said this to our committee a few times, we're within a year of, it's not, it's just not going to work at all. With all the problems that are occurring, to put that kind of money to waste, to me, wasting taxpayer dollars on nickel-diming that building when we could be putting it into something else, whether we renovate, buy, and you know, the other thing that I had talked about and Councilman Reichter mentioned the last building, I think no matter what building we go into, you know, the only one that really wouldn't need the total gut would be the Market Street one, but the, whatever building we decide to go into, and this was just my opinion, and I know, like I said, Rick mentioned it last time, would be to start from scratch, clear it out and then build it as we go. I think one of the things we talked about, we're at a point now too, is do we hire somebody to walk us through all this stuff now? We've been to a couple of police departments, like a consultant to come in and say, this is what, this is how you're going to need to do it. I know Mr. Lamen went up to a couple of departments to look at, I think that's, I think that's pretty much what they have all done, they all hired somebody to come in and kind of really tell us where we're going to be, whether it be, whatever the cost is, I think that's where, again, just my opinion, I could be speaking out of turn here, but I think that's where the council's got to make a decision, is to say, who do we hire to come in and say, this is what, this is what we need to do, once we pick a facility, this is how we're going to do it. And this is what we need, this is the money we're going to have to spend. There's no doubt in my mind, doing nothing at this point is not an answer anymore, it's just not an answer. And I don't think that's your guys' intention and gal's intention at all. I really do think that, you know, we're just to the point where we're going to bring somebody to say, this is how we do it. And going back to your question there is, the guys have some input of what, you know, each person, what they do inside of the department, they all have, they know what they want. Wants and needs are two different things, so they...
So out of these three properties, which one do you think right now suits the needs of a police department going forward?
We need to go, we need to go a little bit bigger than 5,000 square feet, I can tell you that right now. And, and not speaking for Mr. Lamen, Mr. Lamen comes from the LPD, he knows police buildings and departments more than probably some of us here, so I would, you know, get his input too.
Brett, mentioning one thing before you go, Donnie, I want to thank you for, because you've been here from this part and being an outsider and volunteering your time and your expertise is, should be merited and should be noted.
Thank you.
And, but, this is funny now, but it was ironic at the time. A few years back in the middle of a Halloween parade, they were bringing a fugitive into the front of the police station, but we had to stop the parade until they got the guy in the front door. That's the only access you have, was in and out the front door. That's another, on a safety issue and other issues that kind of make that...
And I'll say this much, the committee here, as a committee, we've always all been agreeing on certain things, we did, we, I mean, we didn't dick, we didn't fight, we didn't all agree with certain things. I mean, none of us did sometimes, at certain things. But then we, you know, then we did all our looking and we talked it out and if I liked something Chris did, I'd be like, you know what, I agree, disagree, but you know, I'm going to go, I, you know, you make sense, you know? So we all did agree with everything all the time. But that's why we're at the point, that's why we have our free sites, as Ms. Ocker pointed out, so this is what we have. You know, we need, we definitely need to go over 5,000 square feet.
Is new construction done, like that's off the table now?
My personal choice would be new construction, either stick-built or modular housing currently on the city property. I think you could build an outstanding police building, I think you could put the city administrative, either on the second floor, the same building, and I think you could have it for 25 or 30 years. To me, that's ideal. And it's ideal to me personally, we talked about this, but apparently the money's not there to do that. And I wasn't in the business of financial, that's not what we were talking about, but if I had to do it, that's what I would do, up on North Fourth Street, I told the committee this from the beginning. I think it's an ideal location where everybody in the city goes. People are up there, you got all kinds of, supermarket, you got a college, you know, you got all kinds of things up there. All your kids, all their events are up there, okay? That's when the first committee we spoke about, and Chris knows this was on that committee, we talked about that, giving away from Market Street, because the police can go anywhere nowadays, real fast and, you know, you don't need, I don't know if there's a payphone around to call the police, you know, nowadays, everybody has a phone. So the issue wasn't as much keeping it on Market Street, but I think that's the ideal location. First of the three locations, I would go with Chestnut Street, definitely, for several reasons. One, is that the shell of the building is good, and I know it's an old building, but it's inside is basically all, quite, you wouldn't have much to redo, take out inside, you'd just be building inside. Two, city building's not paying, you're not paying for a building, you're going to be paying for putting it inside. And I encourage the city council, the mayor and the members of committee to vote, that Bloomsburg, elect their police department. About 7,000 square feet, I think it's a great looking police department. And I think you could put something very, very similar, and if you do it right, you could do it better and put it in on Chestnut Street to make it, you could put the code office in there, it would, for many years, you'd have enough room. I personally think the building on Arch Street is too small. I went to Stock Township also, and looked at their police department, they took over a doctor's office. They had 800 square feet for seven officers, I don't know how they did that, I have no idea. Talking to the chief there, they have seven officers, maybe 800 square feet. Now the building on Chestnut, going on Arch Street, that's 4,805, I think, something like that.
What does that mean?
I think if you move in there, I, to me personally, I think it's too small. If you're going up to 12 officers, maybe someday 15 or plus, say you have 12 officers and a chief, and I don't even know if you have parking people...
You have parking enforcement?
Parking enforcement people in there, but you know, you're talking more. I just think if you could, that could be one of the ideal, do it right inside, police departments in the area. And the guy, but with another interesting side, the chief of Stock Township said, they like the lunchroom so much that they're getting officers come over there at lunchtime for other townships, which again, creates, you know, people talking to each other, that you build the right one, you have people coming in there. And I think it could be done very well.
Just to say that. Thank you. I mean, that was all the stuff that we got from the committee, definite value of opinion. Just to quickly speak to the bill, since that was brought up, just why that wasn't presented as one of the three options, it simply was to come down to price. When you looked at the three options that were presented, the assumed prices were all lower than what a build option would be. And when we originally started this committee, we said we would bring three options to the table. A build option, when we had a contractor, they said it was $150 per square foot roughly was what a build option would be. And for us to look at the, the size of the building that we were going to look, without even outfitting it, making it right with utilities, anything with that, we were easily going to get into the 1.5 million dollar range of building a building. We see Dan Bill's about to go on another building, much bigger, but it was going to be over a million dollars to build, which is why we could have talked about it, but you know, cost-wise, it's probably not the most feasible. But, the three buildings that we presented...
The council could consider that still.
Still, absolutely, and you know, when we talked, we can easily go into that. But the three that were presented were at least able to take existing buildings within the city and use them, rather than create another building within the city that leaves then three buildings empty, as lay out sort of thing too, so.
Well, from my observations, Arch Street and Chestnut Street are both one-way streets. Also on Arch Street, I think there was a problem at the rear door with water during heavy storms or maybe melting snow in wintertime or something that there's, I guess, a huge puddle or something by the door?
I don't know, we did not see that when we were up, but then again, it wasn't a heavy rain or anything like that either, Al.
And, and just to answer, the one-way street is not enough, not an issue for police department.
Yeah, that's not...
It's not an issue at all. Possibly a lot of students.
Okay, the only thing with...
For either side.
Market Street might be parking.
Which one's this?
Market.
Market Street. Now I have two other suggestions, I don't know if they've been considered. One would be the American Legion building, half of that is vacant. That is a two-story building, firmly constructed, matter of fact, it was the old armory before they moved up on the hill. And also, the city, I believe, owns a piece of property up on Fourth Street right next to the plaza, where the old railroad and bank was. And that might be a site big enough to put a new building.
Where are you talking, back by, like where the brush pile is?
Where it used to be.
With the brush pile? We don't own that.
No, we own, across the street, but we don't own there.
Yeah, we don't own that.
That's Upper Augusta Township actually.
Yeah.
I think it's right over the line.
Line ends at Bider's, pretty much, right?
Yeah, the corner, the corner of Bider's building is in Upper Augusta Township.
Yeah.
The bank's in Upper Augusta Township. The, the city line is, and this was through a lot of painful looking, right? There's a small sign about that big in front of the YMCA that says city limits. Okay? That's where the city limits end, on the western side of Fourth Street. And they angled straight up through to by where the brush piles at. And there was a corner of Bider's building, a very small corner, and all that parking lot is in Upper Augusta Township.
Okay, but that line is on a curve.
It's just, no, 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 that's, that was the projected line that we thought was, but it was never, it was never probated, am I using the right word, Joel?
Excuse me, yes.
It was never probated back in the 50s to access that land into the city. I bet you I did eight months of research on this when they were going to put the McDonald's up there. And this is what we found out. And actually, they're the ones that put us aware that we didn't actually own the property we thought we owned. And we went, we sat down with attorneys and representatives from Upper Augusta Township or our place and it, it was, it was about an eight-month process. And that line that's drawn on the maps is a dotted line if you would look at that, and which is just a process that we were going through. Now on the east side of Fourth Street, we own to that railroad bank.
That's where the rec field is.
That's exactly, where the skate park is and, and, and the ball fields. And if you go around back, we own all the way up to Schicklinley Avenue, except where those homes are at. We don't know those homes, right? Like, we got, that we own, but now on the other side, and it's, it's weird, but we, we were going to go to court and we lost.
Well then, something in the plaza might work.
That was one of the ones.
That's what, I think, one you were looking at?
It was one, yeah. And to answer your question also, in the Legion, there was a building on Market, I'm not going to say the name of it because I don't think it's publicly for sale, but there was one that was the same size as the Legion that we also looked at, that in the end, it's almost the same size as the Chestnut Street warehouse, with the same amount of work that would be needed. So that one came off the list quickly because we have the warehouse already, so it was...
But no, Legion building has plenty of parking.
Yeah, that, then again, there's this combination, we have to buy that building, whereas the Chestnut one we already own. So when we're comparing buildings of that size and like, Chestnut, we own that one, that's why that one, the other one came off fast. At this point, I think we probably should go...
Are you putting cells and stuff in this time instead of, how was?
Uh, we talked about doing something a little differently than, than holding cells than what we have, currently have. A lot of departments, and that's why, me on the committee, I kept saying to the committee members, go see Bloom, go see, Bloom did a nice job, they really did. They don't really have holding cells, they have interview rooms with benches and shackles and stuff like that. So there are a lot of things we're going to be changing to have dual purposes for the rooms. So that's the, one of the, one of our options, uh, so holding, I'm not saying it's totally out, but I'm not saying that, I mean, that's, we're kind of looking a way of going, going around, just depending, maybe a smaller cell, not maybe this one we have right now, it's a little, you know, it's big, but...
Would it be two separate ones, instead of making out, you get a female and male?
We separate them out, keep them separated out.
But in a room, I'm saying, but...
They always have to be separated no matter what.
I know, but I'm saying we have different, like I know the one that, in Lewisburg that they vote, they have the, what you were talking about, and each one has their own chapel with that room.
Yeah, they don't be, each separate room, they'll be dual, those rooms will be dual purposed.
It's just the committee looked at, I don't know how many different, different alternatives are happening to go with, from three, three holding cells, male, female, juvenile, to what, but I was just saying, I mean, it wasn't that we just, I mean, there was bannering going back and forth for well over a year between the two committees that were set up to get things done. And it was, it was a fantastic process, just to be part of it.
And at this point too, I think it's going to come down to what an architect can do.
And that, that's why we're here.
Yeah, that's why we had to do it.
We're at the point where now it's the council's decision to say, this is where we're going forward and, and...
I think you all are at the point you need a professional coming up.
Exactly.
And that's, we have to talk about that in... And that's, we have to talk about that in the executive session. Talk about, talk about purchase options. Cause we can't, we don't wanna do it for all three, it would make no sense to do that for all three buildings. We'd waste the money.
Our charge was to get three level sites, and I think that's what we passed forward.
Because, because, just, just like Jody had said, you're not also looking at renovating, you're also looking at outfitting the building properly. Not, we're gonna steal a chair from this building to that building to this warehouse. You know, outfit, outfitting the building so it's aesthetically pleasing for everybody that works there, has to go in there. Just, you know, even suspects, you know, victims, children, you know, we're doing a lot of child crimes now, so we, you know, we're trying to make it so everything is, it's, it's a nice place, it's a police department. You know, we don't, no, we're not gonna have a carnival, but we wanna make sure it's nice. We're not saying we want gold lined and diamond studded things, but we also wanna make it so it's usable. It could be multi, like, like conference room we talked about. But not just be for our department, we could, maybe if the code office has something new, they can then use our conference room. You know, stuff like that, but, so we, we talked about a lot of things, so. And I, I, I think the committee prior to some of us being on, like me, you know, some of their legwork, it all just ran together, which was nice. So it, it did help us.
In the back?
Did you say you own the, the old McKinney building there?
The Chestnut?
On Chestnut?
Yes.
The city owns that?
Yes.
I used to work for Wise Marcus, so I know a lot about that building. The, the building itself is really in, but walls and foundation are in good shape.
Could you give us your names for this?
Ed Moyer. The, the foundation, the walls are really good shape, everything like that. But I guarantee you, that's gonna need roof, everything inside, new furnace, new, new electric, new plumbing. It, it really never really had any of that to begin with. As far as like plumbing and stuff like that, that was actually just the warehouse. So it would take a lot of work, but you know, to get good side, you still, you own the building. So you're not paying anything for a building and a plot. You'd be putting all your money into the guts and the renovation, but you couldn't make it exactly like you want, like Brad said, so.
Anything else to add?
Yeah, I just wanna add to the council and the mayor, that they're gonna consider that. You know, I hope you consider, but the plus facts of a police department, and coming from my background, I think a police department can set the tone for a, a community or a city to be safe in the community. And that's how I think starts with a police department. I think, I think you have an opportunity as the council to move the city forward the next twenty to twenty-five years, depending on your police department. If you want good people to come here, I know the mayor is trying to get, is getting officer I meet each time. I hope you get up to at least twelve, in my opinion, if not more eventually. But to recruit officers, it's very different than any police department in this country now. And you know it's hard to get police, I mean, two places I went through this last week, they can't get police officers. But if you have a new facility, good management, and a police officer has something new to come to work. Like Bloomsburg, I was very impressed again. You're gonna get more quality candidates, they're gonna stay here and, and work for the city. I think you have a, a great opportunity. I think you'd have a greater opportunity to decide to build a building. I don't know when the last time a building was built for the city of Sunbury. It's, it's done very few, right, how many years ago? Well, you have an opportunity to do that if you decide. But I hope you put the money, like was discussed by Officer Hare here, to put the money into it, to attract those, to attract people that are qualified. And I think you'll have, down the road, you'll have, you'll see the benefits of that. And I, you know, that one building right now, I think it can be done, but I don't know, again, the cost, you'd have to look at. I encourage, I know, Danville's one point, one, one point nine million, they're gonna get police officers to go there and brand new police department. I understand just recently Mount Carmel, they're talking maybe one point two. I understand Mount Carmel, maybe you know, hopefully this, this council is into this. They got a five hundred thousand dollar grant for the police department. I sure hope, I don't see why we cannot look into that and those areas and get, get that for our, for our city here and our police department. And I think that would, that would go a lot, go a lot of ways.
And to build on, to build on the, what you were saying about Bloomsburg when you went up there. We, they have their block party every year, and I went up, last year we went up and we've had guys go up in the past. And they were, we were up, I was up there, we had fifty, sixty officers in that building. And there was no, and it's not like it's wild, but it's set up correctly that nobody was bumping elbows, nobody was, we had so much room that we, we needed to do for, even, it was set up for that, for fifteen, sixteen officers that they had. We had fifty or sixty guys, officers in that building, in and out. And it was, it was just a flow, the flow itself is, is tremendous. That's why I recommended him go up, and he went up, and eventually said we could come in tonight, so.
What's the timeframe? What are you looking at, building, or whatever?
Depends on who we pick.
Yeah, I mean, we have, I mean, this has gotta go over, there probably should be another committee created as far as the financing goes. Rather than, rather than, I mean, we did what we were in charge to do, and now it should go to the next step.
Next step's picking a building. And it's really, you know, that's, we have to meet, talk about it, pick one, and then we can really dive in. And it doesn't mean, I guess, when I say pick one too, just because if we decide to pursue one, you know, look into it further, does not mean that that's the final choice, that we're stuck to it. Because we may get into it and the cost to renovate may end up being far too high for what we would wanna do. We don't know that, but until we start to explore at least one, we're, we're just gonna keep having this conversation about the, the buildings that are potentially available.
And a consulting firm that I've been reading about, they can help you with also organizing the financing, doing the project management, so that things are, are happening in the construction process in the sequence they need to for getting the renovations done, getting the building outfitted, you know, what needs to be, some things have to be in a certain sequence. And, and it's important that it's done correctly. And they're gonna know, based on their experience, some things that work and some things that don't work, that we are gonna be oblivious to. And that's why, you know, like, like Officer Hare said, an important thing to consider is, is having a consulting firm that's specialized in this.
You gotta decide here or find out what that's more closely, but that's not gonna be done very often.
Nope, again, until we pick one. And that was the other thing you said about grants, and you know, we've found grants out there that are available for police stations. But until you have the architectural work done, until you have the site plan, you have all of that ready to go, they don't even wanna see your application. So you gotta, you can't just say, can we have money and put it to something and hopefully get it. They wanna know your plan, apply for the application, because there are, most of them that we've seen are year-round, applications are accepted. USDA has one, I think, for up to five hundred thousand, which I think maybe what Mount Carmel got, but potentially. But still, we gotta, you gotta have something in place before they'll even listen to you at that point then.
So you're a couple of years away.
I don't know, I think, I think really, they get a year.
Brad was right, something needs to be done by the end of next year.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Finish complete or starting within a year?
I would say complete. We should probably have a decision by the end of this year for next year's budget, at least, I, I would assume.
A decision on the building, the property.
I think we have something built.
No.
I would hope we're gonna have something.
I would pursue that.
I would hope. All right, pursue one, you know? And then to, cause they, like Brad said, a year max, until that building becomes not suitable anymore. So once you pick a building and you start the process, unless there's snags along the way that hold you up, there's no reason that we shouldn't be in by the end of next year, at that, the latest, I think. And I think that we're gonna see that the funding is available. I think we're gonna be able to do it for what we want to, to, unless we dive into the finances.
I have a question about the Chestnut Street project, is that fourteen thousand square feet, including both floors?
Yeah, that's what we, the assumption was. It was never actually measured out entirely, it was the assumption of, first, or second, or seven, seven, is what we were told.
I know that I built the house one time and it was cheaper to build the house than it was to buy one extra.
No, we don't know that until we get the actual costs.
Is there anything else to make for this?
No, just talking.
All right, well, thank you all for coming out tonight, this special session's now adjourned.